See what I did? We'll keep it off.
Oh, my God. It's on. Just do your mic.
All right. After the meeting, we'll play with it. All right, great. So we had called the meeting to order. It's a regular meeting of the governing body of the Borough of Bloomingdale, Tuesday, February 19th, 2019. At this time, I ask everyone to please rise to salute our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Here, Don Lee.
Here.
Councilor Costa.
Here.
Madam.
Here.
Del Ripa.
Here.
Hudson.
President.
Madam. I'm sorry. Sonamar.
Here.
Yazzy.
Here. Also with us, Brianna Calabro, our municipal clerk, and Dawn Sullivan, our borough attorney. This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. Adequate notice was given and advertised in the Herald News on December 23rd, 2018. Copies were provided to all local news media posted here at Borough Hall. Copies is now available to the public and on file with our municipal clerk. Our first item of business is a presentation by Chief Joseph Burrell on the 2018 Annual Report of the Bloomingdale Police Department. So Chief, welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
I just ask you to speak up a little bit, just because the mics are off, so we just want to make sure. I mean, the mics are off, but the recording system is still on, so it'd be helpful.
Thanks. I'll try to make this relatively quick due to the fact, I know I do provide a monthly report to the mayor and council, but for the public out here. This report is just an annual report from 2018, and basically consists of just some of a snippet of what we do as a police department throughout the year. So I'm going to present this report, and again, it doesn't get into all different areas. I kind of pick a few different areas, highlight a few different things, and that's what my annual report will consist of. So I'm going to move at a pretty quick pace here, and first, I just want to say just a quick message of thank you. Thank you for the mayor and council. Thank you to the public for the support that I get for being entrusted with running our police department. It's truly an honor. I take great pride in that, and great pride in being a part of this community where I think we all have the same goal, and that goal is safety. And that's what my life is about in this town, is trying to find ways to make sure that we are safe as residents, as people who pretty much went to town, taking care of and keeping the children safe. And again, I take a lot of pride in that, and I'm really only the presenter of the information tonight. It's the police department and the members of our department, starting from every man and woman on our department, from the crossing guards to the dispatchers to the officers. I'm literally just presenting what they do. I don't do it. It's the officers, it's all the people behind the scenes who are in fact this report. And I'm just, again, standing up here to provide the information of what a great job they do, and again, thank you for entrusting me with that ability. Just real quick, I just wanted to go over what our personnel is. So how is our department set up? Right now, along with myself, we have two lieutenants, we have four sergeants, we have a two-man detective bureau, we have eight patrol officers, we have a records clerk who is also the chief secretary, we have three Class II specials, they also, and two of them are retired officers from our department, they also consist of our courtroom security. We have six part-time dispatchers, one full-time dispatcher, and then we have six crossing guards. So essentially, that makes up the entire personnel of our police department. If we get into a little bit of an organizational chart, we have, again, we have the two-man detective bureau. I have two lieutenants. One is in charge of patrol, the other one is in charge of administration, and then we have four squads. And they operate on a 12-hour shift. They work 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. And they rotate every 28 days. Ultimately, we have four squads led by a sergeant, and also, one of them is led by a lieutenant. I have a separate traffic bureau. He also works a 12-hour shift. And then our two-man detective bureau, they actually work coverage seven days a week. One of them does Monday to Friday, from 10:00 to 6:00, and the other one does Wednesday through Sunday, from 12:00 in the afternoon until 8:00 p.m. And again, that gives us seven-day coverage, which is very important with our detective bureau, and being available after hours for when people get home from work and maybe speak to our colleagues. So essentially, that's just a real quick overview of our organizational chart. Also, this is just a list of different responsibilities within our police department. I just want to go over a few of them, a few things that we have on here. You'll see most, everybody on the police department is involved in some type of responsibility within the department. Things that I just wanted to touch on is we do have a three-man bike patrol. The car safety seats, we have two officers who are child seat technicians. We get quite a few people when they have newborn babies who come to us and ask us to install their car seats. I have two more who will be going to class this year. Essentially, I'd want to have one on each shift, so that any time of day or night, we will have availability to help with the car seats, because that, believe it or not, we have a lot of people who seek our assistance with that. And I had a couple guys who retired, who no longer are available to do that, so we finally have a class available. They don't come up that often, and when they do, they're in South Jersey or quite a ways away, Trenton down that area. So we finally have one this year that's coming up this way. We also have home security checks. I have somebody in charge of home security checks. What we do with that is we'll come out to your house and do our business, and we have a checklist, and we'll go through the outside of your house and the inside and check for anything that we think are being done to prevent any issues or concerns that may alleviate safety measures. And that being said, I really think it's a great program that we offer that not a lot of people take advantage of, so we have to get that back out there. We will come to your house. We've been doing it quite a bit with the seniors, but we're going to, once the weather breaks, I really want to get us back out and doing that, because it's kind of fallen off a little bit. We have six lead officers. We're very involved, obviously, with our school systems, and six lead officers for a department our size, I think speaks volumes to how we feel about the need to address the drug-related issues with our children in schools, and I'm very proud of that program. It's a great program. We went from Dare to Lead. It's more based towards what's going on in your community, where Dare was a workbook, you had to do things a certain way. This, we can work, create, and work it to how it benefits our community for the issues going on in our community. So it's more functional for what we're looking for. Our junior police academy is led by Sergeant Mark Lovewood. Everyone on the mayor and council, I know they're fully aware of it, but again, I think it's, the public is very well aware of it also, but I most like to brag about that one, because that's one of our favorite things to do, and I know a great time the kids have when they're there. Senior citizens. We meet with the senior citizens in Paty, Tennessee, once a month. I have an officer, Devin Pierceel, who will attend the meetings monthly. He'll bring in guest speakers, other officers from the department, and again, it's really just that community-based ability that we have to get together with our senior citizens and have a great relationship with them, and it's really, really taken off and gone real well over the last year and a half. So Officer Pierceel does that monthly. So that's just a couple of the things that are on that list. And lastly, we have a drug recognition expert. Right now, we only have one, Sergeant Mike Goffa. Obviously, there's, it looks like legalization of marijuana is closer than ever, and that's going to be certainly a need for our department in the near future. I know I spoke to the mayor and council about it. The courses for that and the cost would never be quite extensive, and on an average of 200 hours per person for us to put them through the training. So right now, we have one DRB expert. We are going to look to add to that as the laws come to fruition and we make adjustments as necessary. So that's just a little bit on our organizational chart. It has who's in charge of cars, who's in charge of first aid supplies, and all kinds of things up here, but those were just some of the high-level things. Getting into the calls for service, our total calls for service in our computerated dispatch system, that's every call, everything we did. Anytime you stepped out of the car and helped somebody, went to lunch, it doesn't matter what it was. Anytime you signed out on the radio that you were out of the car, that's 25,623 times. We did profane school checks. We conducted 9,057. I'm going to get into that in a later slide. We had 195 motor vehicle crashes that we investigated. We found 48 open or unsecured business doors, responded to 301 alarm calls, assisted the fire department with 193. We had 285 pull-over arrests last year. Of that, 108 were drug-related charges, 36 assaults, six burglaries, 28 DWI's, 911 calls we responded to, 750 911 calls. And under investigation case closeout rate, that's one I'm very proud of, for our two-man detective bureau of Steve Smith and Dan Greedwood. They had 53 investigations, and of that, they were able to close out 49 of them with a percentage rate of 92, which is, I'll sign up for that every day that we, when it comes to closing out our investigations. So that's just some of the, we have park bond offenses are under a UCR, it's a form that we have to fill out every month through the state police. We had 67 park bond offenses are part of the more serious crimes that we have in the town. Murder, rape, robbery, assault, burglary, thefts, motor vehicle thefts, or arson. That number is not high considering the type of crimes. Enforcement of traffic laws, obviously, we make that a top priority for our police department, and it's really, from my standpoint, it's really tough in the sense that you want to give everyone a break when you can, but at the same time, you also have to enforce the laws. And one of the things I find is that we want a reputation of being aggressive when it comes to enforcing laws, because quite honestly, I'd rather see them in another town than ours. And once you develop that reputation of aggressively enforcing your laws, and all we are is enforcing the laws, that's, you're not going out of your way, you're just out there doing your job. But with that, again, I think it's important to have that reputation as a police department and as a town, because it encourages criminals to go elsewhere. And obviously, we don't want to see them anywhere, but we don't want to see them here. And one of the ways that we keep them out or try to limit them coming to our town is by being aggressive with our enforcement. And these numbers here are just indicative of the type of aggressiveness we show. At the same time, again, I have to stress, it's just doing your job, and it's the price of doing business sometimes. We want, if I had my way, we wouldn't have to give anyone a summons, but that's just not the real world. So in 2018, we had 4,271 motor vehicle stops. Of that, there were 3,478 summonses issued as a result. We had 847 radar details. Every officer on our police department is required on their shift to run at least an hour radar every day. And again, that leads to our 847 radar details. We had 362 parking violations, 147 speeding violations, and the list goes on and on. 28 DWI's, and 70 persons who were arrested for possession of drugs in a motor vehicle. Again, so one thing I also have found with the, when we're enforcing these laws and involving this type of activity, is minor infractions often lead to bigger things. A lot of our arrests that have turned into big arrests or solving cases that were substantial have come due to the fact that somebody was pulled over for a minor infraction. So again, sometimes these minor things open up and turn into something major. So that's something that happens when you're out there enforcing the laws. I'm going to move on. Business in residential and school checks. Every member on our police department is required twice throughout the night shift to check all businesses on Main Street, Amber Current Light, and Union Avenue. We've been doing that for years. It's been great. The relationship we form with our businesses has resulted has been fantastic. That being said, last year, 2018, 48 times we found open doors while checking those doors. That's, almost once a week, we're finding open doors. So I feel that this is the service that we provide to the business people in the town, and they serve, they appreciate it. Sometimes you don't like getting a call, one, two, three in the morning, but I can tell you 100% of the time, I appreciate the fact that we're out there getting out of the car, walking, pulling on those doors. We did 725 vacation checks. One of the things we offer is we will, if you go on vacation, we will check your home for more than daily. And last year, manager of that ability to have the police department check your homes for them all the way. And again, just another service we try to provide to the residents, just trying to go above and beyond to give that little extra to our people. We've conducted 4,194 school checks. Every officer is required throughout their shift, on the day shift, to walk through at least all three schools once, if not multiple times. We now take it a step further, and we also do walk-throughs at other high schools. Due to the fact, God forbid there is an incident, we're fully aware of the high school and the inner workings of the high school also. But we conducted over 4,000 school checks. We also conduct those checks at night, all different times throughout the night, the officers are required to check the schools. So that's just some of the types of checks that we conduct while out on patrol throughout the shift. The next couple slides I had just were a heat index, showing how we can actually take maps, we can pin different things on the maps and get an idea of different crimes. We're having an issue in a certain area, we're able to highlight it, we're able to get a heat map to just show that, where the potential problem. I'm going to skip over these, because some of them might actually leave the slides. I'll just move on, and I'll go back to the other slide. Some of the grants, we're involved with our state government on different levels for grants within the year of 2018. Because of the relationship we have with our state and different crackdowns and different driving campaigns they have throughout the year, we were able to get multiple grants in 2018. Just to go over a couple of them, we had the Drives Over Get Pulled Over. We were awarded $5,500 and 100 hours of overtime to combat Trump driving and deal with a national Drives Over Get Pulled Over program. It's done statewide, but not everybody gets funding for this. It's select departments. In our case, because of the results that we've had when we've done them in the past, we continue to get the grants. If I speak of other departments that were, sometimes they're not getting the grant. We got every grant that they awarded last year, and I was really, really happy with that. So we did the Drives Over Get Pulled Over grant for $5,500. We have hundreds of hours of overtime, five DWI arrests, two drug arrests, 221 summonses, and again, that's no out-of-pocket expense for the borough. Then we did the Clicker Ticket. We were again awarded $5,500. We did that, 85 hours of random patrol. From May 21st to June 3rd, we had all kinds of summonses and arrests and different things that have come out of that grant. So again, it's out there keeping people safe and educating them on wearing their seatbelt and represcations of what happened, and events that don't. But there were five DWI arrests from the Clicker Ticket these days.
20%.
And we did the You Tax, You Drive, You Pay. In that particular grant, we got $6,600, and that was April 1st, April 21st, we issued 53 cell phone violations, and between drugs and warrants, war arrests, we had 16 just on that detail alone, and a total of 304 summonses issued. So again, this is extra patrol on top of what we normally have out there, adding those patrol units into the mix, and you can see the proof is in putting, we're out there, and then there's a lot going on. We did the aggressive driver campaign in November, or in August of 2018, and also in November of 2018. That particular grant, we were not awarded any money for, but we still participated in it, and again, we had quite a bit of activity from that participation in that campaign. We had a DWI enforcement program that netted us $2,725. That was for enforcement of DWI patrol during the holidays, during different holidays. It could be Thanksgiving, Christmas, Memorial Day, 4th of July, different times throughout the years where people are always to be out there celebrating or having a good time. We were awarded grant money for that, and then usually at the holidays, holiday weekends. But again, there are six DWI arrests and 10 drug arrests, and 11 warrant arrests during one of the operations. The second one had one DWI, five drug arrests, and 12 warrant arrests. Another grant that we have is the Auto-RS program. That grant, that's a grant, a state, federal grant that we received, and we were awarded over $4,000 in funding for those. It's mandatory that every officer on the department wears a vest. We've got a policy on it, and the borough supplies them with vests, but this helps all set the cost of the borough by us getting these two grants, and again, we're awarded over $4,000. 92% felony deaths for firearms related from the year 1987 to 2015, and it's gotten a lot worse since. I won't even tell you how many, I don't off the top of my head, but I know just since January, how many officers have been shot. And every one of our officers wears a vest, required to wear a vest, and these grants, again, they all, every little bit helps all set the cost. Social media. In 2003, the Bloomingdale launched its website, and again, at that time, we initiated this website. It was a very basic-type website. I will say that we've come a very long way with our website and the services we provide with our website. Now you can go on there and get various types of applications, including firearms permits, forms of bail system registration, making home checks, street of the week, emergency medical cards, business registration cards, overnight parking permits, reverse 911. There's a lot that we offer on our website, and I'm very proud of the website that we have. We've taken it a step further, and now are very active on our Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram pages. And again, it's just to get information out there. It's amazing how much social media has helped us as a police department. It's helped us solve crimes. It's helped us get information that roads closed. Whatever the information is, we're able to get it out there so fast and shared, and what better tool for us than having that at our disposal? We started a thing, a campaign called the 9:00 PM Routine, where we had every night, we put a different, funny slogan out there, just reminding you to lock your doors and bring in your valuables at 9:00 p.m. Bring everything, lock your doors, lock your house, lock your cars. It's just, again, just to get people conditioned and get in that mindset. I know what we were doing, I found myself different about it, and we got a lot of great feedback, and we try to make it fun. So sometimes it's not all serious. Sometimes we'll put pictures on there just to humanize stuff more than anything, and make it real, and try to have fun with it, not always business. We recently started a business spotlight where we're picking businesses throughout the town and just getting the word out about what we have to offer here in Bloomingdale. There are a lot of great things going on, there's a lot of new businesses. And drive up Main Street, you can see all the businesses we're at. And we're just trying to find a way to spotlight, bring people to us. So that's what we've done with our social media. And again, I think we've come a long way with that. Next, we have the Project Medicine Drop. In 2018, we had 256 pounds of unused prescription medications that were dropped off at our mailbox, which is right down in the lobby. Obviously, we're at a very troubling time with regards to opioids and heroin and just all these different drug-related issues. A lot of it starts with prescription drugs. So that mailbox has been a blessing for us. 256 pounds of unused medication. We dig it, we have it burn, we take it down the door, and we have a permit to get rid of it. It's not in the people's hands that we all own, and so that is worth it, waiting for people to have at our disposal here. We want people to come and drop their drugs. Communication and records. Just real quick about our dispatching. We have a monitoring system at our dispatch center, and we're able to monitor the Wolf City Burgling School, the Samuel Arnold School, the Mark Day School, right in front of us all day. And it's, as a parent, I'm sure that would make many parents happy. And we're constantly able to look at what's going on in the school, just keep an eye on our children. And I think the fact that we're able to monitor it from our dispatch, since there's not a lot of police departments that do that, we can. All three schools, screens are up all the time, and I think it's a great thing we have at our dispatch center. We also monitor the Bloomingdale Public Library, and of course, our buildings. And we're looking to expand a lot of the things that we're able to monitor at our dispatch desk. But that being said, the most important thing is our three schools have constant monitoring of our dispatch at all times. Firearms permits. In 2018, we did 30 firearms identification cards and 105 permits purchased. Again, that's a process that requires applicants to submit a background investigation by both state and federal agencies, supply references, mental health checks, and be fingerprinted, and then all that paperwork is presented and do a background check, and hopefully, that's when we will issue a firearm or hand it up to the borough residents. That's the numbers on that. Our police department is an accredited police department. The importance of that is we're up to date on all our policies and procedures. I'll put us against anybody when it comes to training, and where we stand as far as our policies being in place, our procedures being in place, any mandated training, any extra training. We spend a lot of hours throughout the year in training and sending different officers to different schools. Weekly, I have officers every week that are going to school. There is never enough training, and I truly believe in getting as much as we can, and we are. And again, the accreditation is just a great thing, as an department to make sure that we're doing everything, the attorney general is requiring of us, what the town is requiring of us, and what the people expect of us. One thing I demand from our department is that they show compassion, they show empathy, that they treat people good, and that goes outside the accreditation, but that's mandatory for me. That's something that we build on, with every new officer that comes with in our department, and I expect that from them. But the accreditation, again, is just another way we are held accountable. It is a great process, it's not an easy process. We're, we back up to reaccreditation in 2020, and 2019 will be doing a lot of work for Eric. Next slide, we're getting to the end, I promise, is community relations. This is probably my favorite slide of all. This is different things we do with people in our town. Hands down, the most important to me, and that's the community relations that our police department has throughout our town. So I had jotted down just some on the list that I thought were important. So I, I had jotted down just some on the list that, you know, I pulled up and reported and I'm going to read through because I am proud of that as an department. This is all of the members of the department, I'm sure they're in some way or form of this. Uh, we do a domestic violence response team, Christmas drive. We have domestic violence response team. While we're dealing with different, um, families in the community, we're dealing with domestic violence, we try to, uh, help them out at Christmas time and, you know, bring some joy to them when, you know, the time is needed. And, you know, throughout the year, we, we deal with quite a bit of domestic violence related issues. So we, we try to help in any way we can and one of those ways is having a Christmas drive to help these, uh, individuals in need. Uh, we do a Bloomingdale Christmas drive. We had many, uh, multiple families this year where we were able to provide and give them a Christmas or a holiday, whatever that holiday may be, to enjoy just like most of us are able to enjoy. Uh, we take a lot of pride in, you know, being able to supply that. We did No Shape November and, uh, the proceeds of that went to a resident in Bloomingdale with two small children who has, um, pancreatic cancer. So, uh, we were able to make a donation to, to help that person out and their family. Uh, we're involved with the Special Olympics, uh, the 5K, uh, actually a 5K run. Uh, sorry for the misspelling on here. That being said, what, what I love about that this year was, um, I had challenged one of the officers to run in full uniform with his vest on and his whole gear, uh, you know, Sergeant Dave Purse was up to the challenge wearing the 5K in uniform in honor of a volunteer. Uh, we, we are involved with the police unity tour. We sponsor the evening driver a little league. We hand out free scholarships to a couple of high school students every year. Senior citizen holiday party, the officers of the department will, uh, provide and work a dinner for the senior citizens. Uh, that's been a real hit. Uh, one of my favorite that just started late in the good weather last year was the bolt-on book park, or, uh, book box. Uh, hopefully I plan on having every officer, just like the other responsibilities they have, we're going to be required to stop the bolt-on and read a book to the children. Uh, that, that was not something that I came up with. That was Christine and Anna Earl, uh, from our town. Anna was a seven-year-old who came and emailed the idea and her mom was, you know, instrumental in helping with it and, you know, with the help of the DPD now, Al, you know, we now have that set up. At the end of last year, we had guys stopping and reading books to the children and, uh, I just think that's important. We should, we continue with our police fitness challenge we do every year. And then also, uh, this in 2018, we had Katie Gallagher and Emily Keegan for their silver scout, for their silver, silver girl scout award. Uh, they came over and I gave them baseball cards, really trade cards from the police department. That's been tremendous also. Uh, we've had several kids actually come to the police department after school to get cards and in the spring, we're going to be doing a, uh, program with the school and all the kids will be there. Whoever gets, collects all the cards is going to be getting the ice cream, the Rita's or, uh, ice cream bar that we set up. So those are just some of the things that we, uh, have going on within the community. Professional standards, ultimately, you know, I speak very highly of our department, but there are some people who are not so impressed. And when they're not, they have an opportunity to file, file an internal affair complaint. Anyone who has an issue with an officer within our department and the complaint can be anything. We have to take that complaint. It can be anonymous. They can come to the police department. They can respond to the police department. We have to respond to their house. But we have a professional standards, uh, department within our department and we are required to investigate any wrongdoing of any officer, no matter how large, how small. And, you know, I, I proudly report, you know, if we move along, that in 2018, we had one, one complaint, which ultimately was, uh, not sustained. Uh, but when you look at the amount of calls we had, to have one internal affair investigation. You know what? You always want to see it zero, but I'll sign up for that every year. Uh, you know, that speaks volume to the professionals in our department. We move along, we have, uh, we'll put around a department motion. Okay, in, in 2018, on September 18th, we had a promotion within the department. Sergeant Ron Cross was promoted to lieutenant. Ron's a 23-year-old officer, he's done a great job, tremendous with, uh, our computers and on the admin side and certainly earned this, uh, promotion. Again, I thank the council for that, but he has a strong work ethic and certainly brings a lot of different things to the department that, you know, continue to make us better. Okay, next we have goals and objectives for 2019. Final line is get better. Whatever we got to do to keep improving, to get better and, you know, make our police department better. So, uh, that, that's the overview of the goals and objectives. But we do have a couple of things that, uh, we, we are looking to do in 2019 and that's, uh, you know, from, from a mayor and council standpoint, I, uh, I am looking into the special, the new dispatch desk, uh, new radio system, uh, our fingerprint system, which we use all the time, was just, uh, given an end of life, so we're looking to replace that. We have a new outfit test. You know, there's a lot of equipment, you know, that, that, you know, is getting to the point where we're either mandated to replace or we may have to look into replacing, uh, replacing in the near future. Uh, we are looking, uh, with Councilman Don Hudson, I really want to kick off a program of Pro-Tech DNA kits. It's essentially, uh, you can put a unique identifier on any property that you own. You'll have a, a scanner that will be able to identify that piece of property. We're in infant stages of kicking that off, but, you know, Councilman Hudson presented that to me and we're going, we're going to move on that. We actually have started already. Uh, you know, and we have another system or another, uh, program we're going to break out, PPD cares, citizens at risk, uh, emergency entry system, where we have people with, um, the primary goal is to provide a timely response to safety license, reduce injury for adults and children with propensity to wander during, uh, due to a cognitive condition. Essentially, we want to get those people registered within our police department, get their picture taken and God forbid, there's an issue or an incident where they, they go away or, or we can't find them. Uh, we'll be able to have a mapping system that will assist us in, in where our laces are and where this person may have a tendency to go and, you know, it's, it's really just, if we don't, if we're not aware of this, you know, we're, we're starting from scratch. But if we have this program in place, you know, we'll, we'll have the foundation built ready, which will, time is of the essence when it comes to things like that. So we're going to be kicking that off, I'm very sure. And lastly, uh, John F. Kennedy quote, "We must find time to stop and thank the people who make a difference in our lives." In this case, I want to thank the mayor and council for what they do for our police department. They provide us with everything we need. Uh, I can honestly say our department has all the tools on our tool belts that we need to do a good job and keep people safe and, and be proactive and, you know, be ahead of the curve and we have you to thank for that. So, that's all I got.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Chief, that was, um, yeah. Chief, just a couple of things. That was, first of all, that was fabulous. Yeah, thank you for doing that and thank you for your leadership. What amazed me most about all you guys is, uh, you know, not just your compassion for the borough and how well you do what you do, it's, it's you never settle for where you are. It's like always, always striving to make things better, you know, and as, as, as good as we all think it, it is already and it is, you just always strive to, to go one up and that's very impressive. So you never seem to just stand still and be happy. Yeah, no, it's wonderful. So all of us, we thank you, um, the public thanks you. Just a couple of things that we could talk, uh, more in detail, you know, outside a meeting, but, um, you mentioned, you know, not everyone's on social media and, and internet, so, you know, I, not just for the police, you know, we talked about this for just borough services too, just trying to get the word out. So I'd like to just talk to you about maybe just a specific police mailer, almost like a menu, you know, laminated card that can go on someone's fridge that lists all the services that you provide that I know a lot of people are aware of, but there probably are a lot who are not, you know, because of, you know, particularly seniors that may not be on social media or internet and all that. So I think it's something we want to look at. It's not costly, I, I think, just to, to mail a menu of services, that kind of thing, you know, uh, because there's certainly some great services. You mentioned the home security check, you know, that is, you know, underutilized. I think it's just a lack of not knowing, so I really think it'd be, I don't mind spending a few bucks to get the word out. We do a great job of doing that, but I just, we sometimes rely a lot on social media thinking, "Yeah, we got it out there." Not everyone's seeing it, so, um, so that's, that's fabulous. And I look forward to the Bloomingdale cares program, particularly, um, of all ages, but dementia in our seniors and, uh, so we could talk about that. So I'm very, very excited and, and just very impressed with your, your report. Any council member have anything for chief?
John, well done.
Can, can we post this on?
I'm going to be, I'll put this, I'm going to put this on our website.
And could you email Bree a copy of it, just so we can put it on our webs, on our website?
I have a copy.
Oh, you have it? That's right, you do. So.
Yeah, I'll, I'll put it on.
Put it on the web and, and maybe Facebook too. Is that okay with you?
Of course.
It's a public, yes, so that would be good. Excellent. Chief, thanks.
Thank you.
Incredible. Really appreciate it. Um, well done. Okay, so moving along, we, there is no, um, early executive session. We do have two non-agenda items, which we mentioned now in case the public wishes to speak to. And those two non-agenda items are the introduction of a, um, uh, capital ordinance from, funded by the capital fund in the amount of $14,000 for, um, specific software the fire department's requiring. That was planned on being in 2019 capital, but we really need to get this expedited and so that's on a non-agenda item to introduce that ordinance with the second final reading, hopefully March 5th. And the second item was the approval by resolution of the 2019 Rose Fund, Recreation of His Base Fund, uh, recommendations from that committee. So those are, those two items. Reports of the governing body and our professionals first. Bree, do you have anything for us?
I do.
No, no wedding stories, no fun stuff, no congratulations. Bree, Bree was married this weekend, so we congratulate you and, uh, very happy for you and Stephen. Dawn, do you have anything for us?
Nothing this evening.
Okay. Any council members have anything?
Just, uh, government ops and public safety committees have been doing their tour of departments and sitting down reviewing capital and getting some interesting information from our DPW award department and public safety. So it's been, um, a learning curve for us and a lot of good information, so we're going to continue it.
Could, anyone else have anything? Um, just to allude to Johnson, capital plan is being developed. Gov Ops is meeting with departments because there has to be some cutting in that, you know, plan, um, but, uh, and we'll hopefully have an introduction sometime late March on that, uh, ordinance to move forward. The budget is, is, uh, in, in, in the works. We're waiting on the order to fine tune some things and then the committee will meet. Forward that to Gov Ops for your review and hopefully do a, a, a March 19th introduction of that. So that gives me a month to get it to you guys with plenty of time to, uh, put some input in and make recommendations on that. Continuing, we, as you know, we authorized a few meetings ago, our bond sale. We had a, a very successful bond sale. We ended up, prior to the bond sale, having a standards and poor financial rating for the borough. We haven't had one in a number of years. Um, I'm very proud to say that the borough's financial rating went up entirely two full levels. We rated it at a double A minus, which is pretty much from a credit standpoint, in the highest range you can, you can get. And as a result, we got bond sales with interest rates of, uh, um, you know, 2.4% on, and like 1.5% on the note. So that was very positive for the borough. Ray, you being in finance, I don't think we expected rates so low, right?
No, there, and I'll tell you, when we first looked at Ryan's, uh, spreadsheet showing that we were going to spend 1.4 million in interest expense, I'd love to know what that number is now.
What it was based on originally? Yeah, I'm waiting on that.
Yeah, it was like based on 4%, but now that's like 1.4.
Yeah, it's half of that, so.
I love that you're saying that, yeah.
We will.
It's going to be, it's going to be.
That's a lot of what I'm waiting on for the budget as far as the, the deposit money needed for this year's repayment, so, which we needed the sale to occur to determine that, so. But we're in a good place that way, so I thank you all for your help on that. Um, at this time, I need a motion for early public comment. Early public comment is reserved for agenda items. Who makes that motion, please?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak to an agenda item, please come on up. Thanks again, chief. So you know a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now I need a motion, I know, for the consent agenda, uh, resolutions 2019, um, 2.8 through 2.16. First, who makes that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, just discussion, anyone? Just real quickly, I just want to point out that the community development block grant, I know I talked about sidewalks on Hamburg Turnpike, but at the recommendation of our engineer and then I, after inspection, strongly agree, we'll be seeking funding for sidewalks. Some areas, they exist, but they are need, desperately need to repair from, uh, on Union Ave from Hamburg Turnpike to Rafkin Road, um, in lieu of Hamburg at this time. So that's, that's going to be that application. Um, any further discussion on the consent? Can I have a roll call, please?
Costa?
Yes.
Tomato?
Yes.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Sondemeyer?
Yes.
Gassy?
Yes.
Thank you. Pending items, um, we have a second final reading on ordinance 1-2019, purchase of our garbage truck. Uh, can I have a public notice statement, please?
Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was posted in a municipal building, published in Herald News and copies were made available to the public, so that a motion may be made that it be read by title.
And who makes that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Bond ordinance amending and supplementing bond ordinance number 8-2018, finally adopted by the Borough Council of the Borough of Bloomingdale and the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey on March 20th, 2018 and entitled, "Bond Ordinance Providing for the Purchase of a Garbage Truck in and by the Borough of Bloomingdale, County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, Appropriating $300,000 Therefore and Authorizing the Issuance of $285,000 Bonds or Notes of the Borough to Finance Part of the Costs Thereof, To Increase the Total Appropriation Therein from $300,000 to $358,000 and To Increase the Total Debt Authorization Therein from $285,000 to $340,000 and To Amend and Supplement the Other Provisions Therein."
Easy for you to say. Um, just to sum that up, we had an existing ordinance from last year's garbage truck. We just needed to add some, that'd be $64,000 to that to make the availability for funding this year, but thank you so much. At this time, I need a motion to open the, the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak to 1-2019, our garbage truck purchase? See no one, motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And who moves to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Sondemeyer and I didn't get the second one. Go on.
I'll tell you.
Sounds good. Um, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Tomato?
Yes.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Sondemeyer?
Yes.
Gassy?
Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Okay, item 12, new business. I need a motion for resolution 2019 2.17, payment of the bills. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Sondemeyer?
Yes.
Gassy?
Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Tomato?
Yes.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Next, I need a motion for Resolution 2019 2.18, transfer appropriations. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Tomato, Hudson, vetting comment, discussion? Roll call, please.
Hudson?
Yes.
Sondemeyer?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Tomato?
Yes.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
Thank you. Our final item of new business is a, need a motion for introduction of bond ordinance that would be 2, correct?
2.
2-2019, which is amending bond ordinance 18-2001. Who makes the motion to introduce by title?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This will be second and final reading. Do we have time for March 5th?
Yes. Bond ordinance amending bond ordinance number 18-2011, finally adopted by the Borough Council of the Borough of Bloomingdale, County of Passaic, State of New Jersey on November 22, 2011, entitled "Bond Ordinance Providing for Various Capital Improvements of the Borough of Bloomingdale, County of Passaic, New Jersey, Appropriating the Aggregate Amount of $1,800,000 Therefore and Authorizing the Issuance of $1,710,000 Bonds or Notes of the Borough to Finance Part of the Costs Thereof, to amend and restate Section 3 and Section 6 Therein."
Thank you. Again, second and final reading, March 5th. Just to sum that up, we are utilizing $27,000 of existing funding from Chapter, from Section 20, miscellaneous funds from an old 2018 bond for the fingerprint system the chief was referring to earlier that we just received our notice of, it's life being over. Exploring some fix-it from Borough Hall flooring in the hallway areas, and the mixer in this building that's in the sound system here, that is 20 years old. So we're going to be able to fund those things so we don't have to borrow new money in 2019. And second and final reading, March 5th. Thank you. There were two non-agenda items. First, I need a motion, Resolution 2019 2.19, which is to approve the Rose Fund recommendations for 2019. Who makes that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
I think I got Sondemeyer, and seconded by Rich. I remember this discussion, we are, their advisory board, they pretty much give the same recommendations each year. The governing body can make additional amendments during the course of the year. Councilwoman Hudson, you know the request was amended.
Yes.
It should have been there, so for making sure that we support the community garden in there as well. So again, we have a motion, a second, for adoption of those recommendations. I'd like to thank the Rose Committee, who we have a rep from the Environmental Commission, Planning Board, and Rec, and the two at-large residents who put their time in to make these recommendations for us. So can I have a, just a roll call, please?
Sondemeyer?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Tomato?
Yes.
Del Ripa?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Our other non-agenda item was introducing ordinance 3-2019, by title, second and final reading, also March 5th. This is simply an ordinance to establish utilizing capital fund balance, not debt. This was cash on hand, $14,000, to purchase software, very important for the fire department to complete their permit processing that the state requires. They started the project last year, and we're looking to fund it this year. We need to get this done expeditiously. So who makes the motion to introduce 3-2019?
So moved.
Second.
I have Mike and Tony. Again, this is introduced by title, second and final reading, March 5th. And can I have, all in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale appropriating $14,000 from the capital fund balance for the purchase of a fire department records management system.
Thank you so much. Late public comment, I need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak, please come on up, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We do have executive session, we have two personnel matters, two matters in negotiation. Any action the governing body makes, the public will be given opportunity to speak to. Please note the schedule, March 5th, 19th, and April 2nd. And at this time, I need a motion at 7:57 PM to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Tony and Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
2019.
2. No, I told Mike this was a motion. I'm not taking this.
20 and 21. Okay, we resume in open session at 8:26 PM. At this time, I ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2019 2.20, which is to accept the settlement, retirement and settlement agreement with employee Robert McIntosh. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yasi?